We have a call to order this meeting of the planning board for July third, twenty twenty five. Commence with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have no minutes to review or discuss, and we have one extension on the form up. Regarding Amy's Kitchen as to which I will recuse myself. Gio, could you deal with this matter, please?
Okay, will do. This letter is from JNG Law Firm. It's a request for extension for Amy's Kitchen slash Science of the Soul. Dear Chair and Burgess and Planning Board members, I'm writing to you on behalf of Amy's Kitchen and Science of the Soul to request an extension of the amended site plan approval granted by this board on January eighteenth, twenty twenty four, signed by Planning Board Chair Burgess, February fifteenth, twenty twenty four, and filed with the town clerk on February sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The approval is set to expire on or about July eighteenth, twenty twenty five. We are requesting the approval be extended six months to January fifteenth, twenty twenty six. As we discussed with the board, when the site plan was amended, Amy's has completed most of the infrastructure work that was required to be completed, which includes installation of approximately three miles of water and sewer lines, Route seventeen M improvements, and construction of the principal access road and bridge over the Walkeel River. Amy's has also constructed the main entrance building and commenced construction of the welfare area of its manufacturing facility. The adjoining Science of the Soul facilities have been substantially completed. Operations have commenced, and I understand a temporary CO has been issued that will become permanent once they're connected, once connected to permanent sanitary sewer collection facility. Amy's has been exploring options to ensure the property is developed as soon as possible, and the extension will allow that process to continue forward. I therefore respectfully request that the planning board place this matter on its next available meeting agenda to grant the extension of the site plan approval as requested up to January sixteenth, twenty twenty six. They had originally requested January fifteenth, twenty twenty six.
It's the fifteenth.
It is the fifteenth, okay. So, any discussion, any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
I got a question. Is that last extension?
I think this might be their last extension, it's the two years for the site plan.
If they sell the property, does this approval go to the new owner?
The approval continues unless they abandon it or change from that. So they can continue with the approval for what the use and structures and everything are. But if that use changes, like it would if it was for retail, if it was going to another retailer, it'd be.
So the owner doesn't?
The owner doesn't matter.
Um, um, I'm okay with this.
Okay.
Anyone else? Can I have a motion to extend Amy's Kitchen preliminary approval?
Second, second amended site.
Second amended site plan approval to January fifteenth, twenty twenty six. Eric, Seamus second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I probably voted on that, I think.
I'm sorry?
No, I have to come the seventh vote.
I think you're probably recused.
Okay, that, that works too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let the record show that Neil is recused.
Who was the second?
Uh, the second was Seamus, Neil is also.
Okay, good.
Recused, but thank you. Thank you.
Okay, there being no further possible expeditions or abandonment of application and no public hearing, we'll go right into the items for discussion. First item is American Reclaim LLC. It's an application for site plan and special permit approval for custom wood furniture fabrication on two point eight plus or minus acres along New York State Route seventeen A in the HC zone with AQ three and stream corridor overlays. The matter for tonight is to consider a draft resolution of conditional approval, special permit, and major site plan.
Yes, if you recall, I had provided you with a draft for your last meeting, but we had not yet heard back from the county for the GML report. We did get that back, so I sent you an updated redline version for your consideration. I did update the correspondence from the DPW, and that was dated June ninth. There was a local determination from the Orange County Planning Department that was dated June seventeenth. There was a typo on page four that your Lee Burgess pointed out, so I put in property line, and I fixed that. And then your specific conditions, he also pointed out one C, so it should say prior to signing the plans, the applicant shall revise the plans to remove all outdoor storage from the front side and rear yard setback areas except as allowed by the ZBA variances. And then the specific conditions remain the same as discussed and shown last time. I don't know if anybody else has any other suggested or recommended revisions? Or any other type of.
Wait, does anyone have any comments, suggestions, or changes?
I don't.
No.
I do not.
In that case, can we have a motion to approve the draft, the resolution of conditional approval, special permit, major site plan for American Reclaim LLC formerly known as Authentic Antique Lumber?
I'll place a motion.
That, they added places a motion, can we have a second?
I'll second.
Marty seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone again? No extensions? See, that is.
Judge.
That's Rex Clavely from MJR Security. Thank you very much. Enjoy your course.
Nice job.
All right. Solar, next item is solar liberty energy systems Inc. It's an application for subdivision cycling and special permit for solar energy system on approximately fifty nine acres along Millburn Road, Moonlight Trail, Storms Road in the RU zone with AQ three, stream corridor and water supply, watershed and scenic road corridor overlays. The matter tonight is to consider a draft negative declaration on the SECA.
They are not here right now, and so I would suggest we move on to your next application.
All right. The next, the next matter before us.
Kings Garden.
Kings Garden LLC, it's an application for site plan approval for an agricultural warehouse and onion packaging facility on approximately ten and a half acres along Pulaski Highway, County Route six, and Wiznuski Road in the AI zone, AQ three overlay. This is an initial presentation and commencement of SECA. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joe Fow, Peter Zach and Fow representing the applicant. Yet, as spoken, this is our initial application. It's, it's a sketch site plan, but I just wanted to go over a few basic points of, of the application. This was originally, from what I'm told, a, a, a large warehouse onion packing building that, that burned down, and what they're, and you could see the remains of it, that is basically the, the concrete areas that you see. And what they're proposing to do is build a twenty two thousand plus square foot building within that area. And you see, we have a couple of, we call them mitigation areas if you want to relabel them, but basically areas that we've taken away so that we haven't increased the furthest areas. The access into the site and will be in, we'll show this on, we were just getting our architecturals in, will be exclusively from Wiznuski Road. That's where the, the access for trucks and, and employees parking will be. And there'll be no access from Pulaski Highway except for possibly a, a secondary emergency access for fire emergency vehicles and whatnot, but however we restrict it, there will be no access from Pulaski directly to this facility. We have done our subject design for it. We anticipate no more than fifteen employees. So the subject is based on that. It's gonna be very low water usage. You'll see that there are a number of buildings, outbuildings on, on the property, some old bungalows buildings. I believe they were used for, a lot of them were used for migrant workers in the past. There is no proposal in this application to have any of those buildings utilized for migrant workers or, or any other use at this time. They're, they're, they're vacant, from what I understand. There may be a possibility that the front building, which is labeled as dwelling, may be utilized as an office in the future. But at this time, the proposal is strictly for, oh, I'm sorry, and there's also a the storage building in, that also comes off, Wiznuski Road is also in use. There is no water or sewer within that building. It's strictly storage, and that will also be part of the application.
That will continue or?
That will continue, correct.
There's, there's, that's just a storage building, like a.
Yes.
So what are, what are the gas tanks outside of it?
That's a good question. I don't know. I, maybe heat, I don't, I don't know, I'll, I'll find out.
Okay.
But there, I've been told there's no water and sewer in the building at all.
So one building will be storage, no habitation in any of the facilities.
Yes, Neil, the one.
No residence, apparently.
Correct, correct. And just to let you know, under SECA, I know that you had requested a long form, which we're prepared to do there. It looks like endangered species identified and also shipo, and we've als, we've already started the ball rolling on both. They've hired consultants to take care of both of those, so their, hopefully subsequent submissions will have your endangered species report that we'll submit, hopefully with a long EAF, as long as, and we'll be waiting for our shipo sign out, which will also be given to you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I was, I was gonna say, what's this building that's encroaching up front on that Butterworth? Seems like it's over the property line.
Oh, the, on the adjoining, on the, the adjoining property. I don't know the answer to that question either, I'm sorry.
Looks like they've got an oil tank on this, your property from their building.
Yeah, it, it definitely encroaches, because the survey is fresh. But, you know, you'll, you'll see it's all within that retaining wall. So I don't know.
I, I, I think it's a matter between two property owners, so if the applicant doesn't really have any issue with it, you can structure any action or any approval, that you're not approving those encroachments or anything like that. But if the applicant, this applicant wanted to approach that neighbor about removing those encroachments, they certainly could. Sean.
So, very quickly, under the code, food processing and packaging and warehouse, even regarding agriculture require site plan approval, that's why they're here before you. Public hearing is required because it's considered a major project. I had put in my report that Frank should weigh in at some point whether this is a corner lot. Your code's definition generally, it, it seems pretty obvious what a corner lot is, right? It's on the corner. But in this particular case, there's a lot between the corner and the applicant's property, so it may not be considered a corner lot under your code. Mr. Fow pointed out those concrete floors, they're removing a portion, so they're reducing their nonconformity in, or an accretion in one of the setbacks. He's already discussed the access. I asked for a circulation plan. There's a lot of things going on in this site. I just want to make sure I understand how trucks are gonna come in, how they're gonna leave. We'd ask them to show the loading docks, again, so we could understand circulation. Water demand, Mr. Fow said it was a, a low water demand. You will still need to do a well test. But you could design the well test based on, you know, what you see, right? I spoke about wastewater treatment, and the last thing I had was a question regarding lighting. I don't know if this facility, I understand it will be used year round. I don't know if there's gonna be any work in the late fall or anything like that, which could necessitate a need for lighting.
Right, yeah, and we'll be discussing that with the architect as well. We're just getting the architecturals in and actually showing where the loading is and whatnot, so the next plan will have more detail on that.
And there's an area of grass that's being, it looks like it's being covered over, but being offset by a slightly larger area.
Yep.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes. There's this tiny one hundred eighty nine square feet that were.
So you'll be mitigating by an offset?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the total, the, the point of the whole thing is to, is to not to increase the furthest services.
Okay.
Those, those concrete walls that are around those buildings, those are all remnants of the old building, or?
Yes.
They, they.
Yeah, it's just, it's really a concrete, it's like a pad. You know, you can drive over it, and it's, as a matter of fact, we have, you can, you can do Google images of, I think in the past, they had some operations out there, and they had utilizing that pad for, you know, for the, for their packing trucks and, and, you know, the parking and whatnot.
Good question. The bungalows as well, they're not occupied?
No, everything's vacant.
How about that rather large building?
It's, it's, it's in vacant, from what I understand. It's fairly in disrepair, but it's.
Yes, it's completely.
So right now, nobody uses the lot?
No. Yeah, but what I'm told, everything is, is, I mean, I believe that the well is hooked up to the dwellings, but there isn't, but they're, they're not occupied.
Okay.
But the proposal is to take that well and if, if it works out, utilize that for, for the warehouse.
Do you have any idea of the amount of traffic to be generated as a result of the?
I was told it was low, but only low by the owner, the applicant, but I will get more specific figures on that.
So they want to keep this as an agricultural property?
Correct.
Can I ask who bought it or who owns it?
Hopefully see that, some application, an application.
Kings Garden LLC.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Gibbs.
This is Kim.
Well, since Kim is down the road, that's why I was wondering who owns it.
Kim said it.
I, I don't know if there's been a change of ownership, because this was before you in twenty eleven, it was all, it also went by.
Twenty eleven?
Yeah, it was also went by Kings Garden. So at least between the last fifteen years, I think the owner has remained consistent, or at least the LLC.
Yeah, and it's on the owner's endorsement.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, it's gonna be an onion packing facility, that's, that's the game plan.
That's okay, I'll find out.
Any further questions from board members?
Quick, there, there's a utility line crossing the whole area where the proposed building. It's gonna be a C utility pole.
Yeah, and they may be relocated. They're, they're not a, they're, they're private utility poles. They're not servicing anything else, right? You know, it's not like there's an easy, their, their poles just servicing the existing buildings that are there and most likely the old warehouse, which is not there anymore. But we will address that on, on the next plan as well.
Anything further, Sean?
No.
In the candidate notes, yeah. We typically request twenty five foot from center.
Yes, in connection with Wiznuski, that has a thirty three foot wide right away. It's typically been the practice this board, we have a condition like that to request twenty five feet, so you can have a, you can normalize the right away.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, just going back to Sean's comments about my interpretation of, of a corner lot or not. I, I don't interpret this as a corner lot, through being there, there is a separate parcel right there on the corner itself. So when I read the definition of corner lot, I don't feel like this is, this meets that definition.
The significance being?
A corner lot under your code has two front yards, two side yards and no rear yard. So this would then have a front yard, dedicated front yard will determine out which, which area is the front, or the front.
Okay.
And I would, I would just, to keep it moving along, I'd say Wiznuski would be the front yard. That's, that's where the majority of this operation is gonna take place.
And in this particular zone, the side yards and rear yards are the same.
Yeah.
It'll really, it doesn't affect the plan itself.
Kelly?
So for this project, it will need add data mailings when that comes up, but we're not there yet. GML referral is required, public hearing is required. We're not there yet either, but what we do need is a full EAF. And once we get that, then I could do lead agency mailings. This was last done in twenty eleven, but obviously a lot of time has passed. The application has changed. So if the board would like, you can declare your intent to serve as lead agency, type the action as unlisted.
Separately or together, gentlemen?
You can do it together.
Okay, can we have a motion to declare our intent to be lead agency? And a, to type this as a.
Unlisted.
Unlisted action.
So?
Can we have a second?
Also.
I'm sorry, Se, Seamus second. Diana, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
And then I'll mail that out once I get it from you. And that's all you can do tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a great Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, back to solar liberty. How would you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you, I'm sorry.
Solar Liberty is not here. I got a strange email from them, which I will read. Because I sent them a copy, as I do to your applicants, and they said that their team would review it and be in touch soon. They've been working on the glare issue since their last appearance, so they hope to have an update on it soon. So it does not sound like they are coming this evening. I did send them an email and ask if somebody was on their way and said that we'd second called the application, but they're still not here. So I really don't think that you should discuss the application or the negative declaration at this point. If it was traffic or something like that, then it's been.
I, I agree. I mean, as much as they're saying they're still working on the glare issue.
It sounds like they're trying to work it out.
They're still in process.
Which is funny, because they asked you to reconsider authorizing a neg debt for this evening, if you remember your last meeting.
There was some discussion about that.
There was.
I struggled to get it done, it's been preparing. But, so I don't, I think you should push that off to the next time, after you receive the information. I wouldn't just rush to.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll put it on to a next meeting, Sean?
Uh, yeah, we, we can do that.
Only if it's, only if we've received something.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Well, since you haven't received it today, then I would say no, not for your next meeting.
Okay.
I was surprised to see the negative, negative declaration without that, where.
I, I left a blank. I didn't know.
The board discussed that, if you remember. There was a lot of discussion.
There was.
Yeah.
We should move the meeting on the four minutes.
Would you like me to mention your next agenda items?
Yes, please, please.
So, new application, single family residence, ten strack road, it will be before you, as other applications have, because it's in the reservoir overlay, and so it's in the area that drains to the ocean reservoir, so it needs cycle approval. Seventeen M flex, that's why I asked Mr. Fow just to stick around, so just wanted to mention to him, remind him that he was on next, next meeting. Seventeen M Flex, that's why I asked Mr. Fowle just to stick around, so I just wanted to mention to him, remind him that he was on the next, next meeting. And possibly T-Mobile co-location on the utility, on the monopole that we talked about with Gotham, if you remember, by where Garty lives. And possibly Gotham Properties, depending whether they have a ZB A decision at that time.
They've already received, I've already received the draft, so we shouldn't.
Okay, so likely those four.
Okay.
And after you close the meeting, if I can have a brief attorney client. I don't want to ruin Phil's record.
Okay. You have a motion, please, to close the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Marty, can we have a second? Seamus, all in favor?